Looks like we're recording, so I'd like to welcome you and call to order the September 8th, Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And due to the governor's stay home, stay safe order, we will be conducting this meeting virtually. And we're utilizing Zoom and there's also telephone numbers for calling in. And we've published those numbers and meeting IDs on our website and also on the agenda for this evening. So welcome any guests that are joining us tonight. And with that, I have and you have an agenda that's been published. Are there any additions, subtractions or modifications to the agenda you'd like to see this evening?
Mayor, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, why not? Thanks for keeping me in order. Mr. Clausen had his hand on his heart. Why don't I put, get the flag out here and I'll lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for keeping me on track. And now we're to the approval of an agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
A motion to approve by council member Ashby and a second by council member Clausen to approve the agenda as presented this evening. Any discussion of this evening's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. We're to our first citizen comment period. And that is for anything that is on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone from the public? I see one phone number there. Would you like to address the city council? You'd have three minutes if you'd like to. And if you need to identify yourself though. Anyone wishing to address the council? Last call for any item on the agenda. The second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting for those wishing to address the council. Okay, we are to our consent agenda now. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I will, we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. I've got a motion by council member Clausen, a second, my council member Kuchardi to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion of the consent agenda items. And as Brandy pointed out, council member Luca Riley is excused on the consent agenda. So all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are, we have a presentation tonight, a couple of guests. We have Fire Commissioner Dusty Wiley, who's been a longstanding member of our community and
I'm sick.
And we have our new fire chief, Chief Jeff Fawcett. And I think he's got a presentation for us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, we somehow skipped the item number three for citizens comments. And somehow we were not, we were challenged technologically. We were not able to get in on time.
Okay, certainly you may, you may address the council at this time. You have, if you could identify yourself for the record and, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate this. My first name is Shabaz, last name is Nafti. My wife's name is Elizabeth and same last name Nafti. We both are the residents of 719 Sydney. And we own the property next door to us, 807 in Sydney as well. And this is in reference to the comments on DAS and EIS scope that we provided. According to the proposed comprehensive plan, you plan to change the zoning of our properties from neighborhood mixed use, medium density residential to commercial. Our two properties located again on 719 Sydney and 807 Sydney where they are, they were singled out in this process. And according to building type description from the city of Port Orchard, this would preclude the building of single family detached homes. And hence be determined detrimental to our use of these two properties. But as you know, sir, we purchased these properties to build our dream homes on them. And our daughter is currently in medical schools and plan on moving back once she graduates from, from her schools and serve this community. We certainly did not seek or ask for the reclassification of our properties. And we submitted our comments on 17th of August. Basically, we supported alternative one for no action. And we received confirmation and we thank you for getting confirmation on it. We just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board. And we were not certain how our two properties on the east side of Sydney got included in the, in the commercial zoning that affects on west side of the Sydney Avenue. So we respectfully requesting to just leave our properties alone as a residential use as we have. And so that we could enjoy this community and we continue living in this community. And we thank you for this opportunity for giving us time to speak.
You're welcome. And I thank you for your comments this evening. All right, with that, anyone else missed in that technology challenged or related to public comment? I see no other members of the public, so we'll move back again to our presentation, which is Chief Fawcett this evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council members, staff of Port Orchard, city of Port Orchard. It's an honor to be here tonight. One, as the new fire chief, want to introduce myself. I've seen many of you through different arenas. I've no stranger to South Kids, South Fire and Rescue. I've been here since the early 90s and worked through volunteer ranks all the way up to where I am today as the fire chief. And so I just wanted, one, introduce myself and say hello and thank you for all that you do and our great partnership that we enjoy between the fire department and the city of Port Orchard. I would also be remiss if I didn't say, we want you to be careful. And all our citizens are out there on our extreme fire behavior that's going on right now. We have invented a face to burn ban and we have been very busy over the last 48 hours. And it doesn't look like we're going to get any reprieve here in the next three or four days. So I just want everybody to be safe. There's a phase two burn ban, which means absolutely no burning, including charcoal briquettes over the next, probably next week or so until we get this, get some weather in here. But to the reason why I'm here tonight, I do want to talk, I'm going to share my screen here and make sure I can get that up and running and get that going. Share, you should see our presentation up and running there with our capital facilities bond. We are presenting to our public a plan that has been in motion for about seven years. And it was put on delay back in, back in the beginning about April or May because of our, because of COVID. And so, but we have not lost sight of this plan and this mission that we're on. And I just want to take an opportunity to share what proposition means to the city council and what the plans are for South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. Just a brief overview for some of you that don't or don't know the specifics about Fire, South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. We do cover 117 square miles of the south end of Kitsap County. That also includes the incorporated part of the city of Port Orchard. In 2019, we responded to nearly 11,000 calls. Currently, we employ 103 employees, full-time employees. Eighty-four of those are what we would deem as firefighter or suppression personnel. And then we're backed up with another 30 volunteers. South Kitsap Fire and Rescue is the biggest fire district in the county. We run the most calls. And due to our financial impacts and other things that we have going on, we actually have the least amount of staff compared to the other fire districts of our size. And that's just based off of our tax assessments and the residential, large residential rural area that we have at the extreme south end. But that we have been working on and we had a plan, we have a plan in place. If you recall, Chief Wright probably made a presentation similar to this back in 2015 about an apparatus and equipment bond. At that time in 2014, we were in what we deemed deficit spending. The recession had hit South Kids, South Fire and Rescue hard as a junior taxing district. And we were in a recovery mode. Chief Wright set out to correct all that and put us, what I'm deeming on a very tight budget diet and got us where we needed to be today. But the first part that we did in 2014 was we came to the voters in South Kitsap and we asked for a five-year apparatus and equipment bond. And that bond pushed us through and it was passed within, with 72% of the citizen approval. And that was really just the first bite of this bigger plan that we've been working on and was meant to do a couple of things. Because we were in deficit spending, we were working off month-to-month financials, trying to keep things moving in the district and keep the district moving ahead. We were trying to gain community support. So Chief Wright's concept and vision was that we would come out with a small bond measure that addressed our first and foremost need. And that was our apparatus and equipment. And if you call after passing that, we had pictures and news media of all the brand new fire engines and apparatus that we had were able to acquire through that and get that going. But while we were in that process, Chief Wright was also addressing the facilities that we have in the district. And looking at the next piece that we have within South Kitsap, which was a bigger need, more than, more money than it was the equipment that we had. And so in, we, like I said, we passed this bond and we have, we believe, built a lot of community trust by doing the bond project on time and very fiscally responsible with that apparatus, the equipment bond. We're very proud of what we did there. The next step is our facility bond. And that's proposition one that will be coming up. And there are several reasons that we need proposition one. Number one is the age of our facilities. We have 12 fire stations located throughout the fire district. One of them within the city of Port Orchard. But the other 11 peppered, if you will, all the way throughout that 117 square miles. Many of those buildings are, were built in the 1960s and early 70s. And they were not built for modern fire apparatus. They were not built for the modern workforce. And many of them were given to us by donation through citizens, property that citizens had back in the, back in the 50s and 60s. They donated to their local fire department. They built a little fire station, housed a couple rigs and had those in those areas. They were not built to house firefighters 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And certainly weren't built on property that was big enough for us to work around and build on or add to in some of these areas. In addition to that, the locations of those facilities, as you can imagine, since 1960 to the year 2020, our demographics of South Kitsap area, city of Port Orchard, we have changed drastically. And the populations have kind of morphed or evolved into different pockets. We see a huge amount of growth happening in the city as it continues to grow out in the McCormick Woods, the Stetson Heights, the old Clifton area. As we see it kind of spread down the Bethel corridor and out on Sedgwick. And then out in the county area, we see a large growth happening out in the Yukon Harbor and the Manchester areas. And as we study those, those are our big areas that we want to address or need to address. And so as we started looking at this, Chief Wright came up with the idea through studies and through planning that the facility bond would be our next opportunity to go to the citizens and ask them to help solve a very big concern for us in the fire department. Proposition one would build three new fire stations in, throughout the fire district. It would also provide seismic upgrades to four of the fire stations that we know that will be around for years to come. And then it will also build a public safety campus or as we know up here, our headquarters building on Furcrest. I'll talk a little bit more about each one of these as we go and where we're going to put those and what that means. But this all will, just like the fire apparatus, it'll meet the current, the bond that we had prior. This bond will help us meet current and expected growth in strategic locations. Like I said, the properties that we have, we don't have enough property on most of those that we can tear down the building and build a modern infrastructure. And if you're going to build those, you want to make sure that they're built in strategic locations that can meet the better need of the citizens as we, as we grow and as we look to our future growth. It will also combine up our staffing currently. Like I said a few minutes ago, we have seven fire stations that are staffed 24 hours a day. But unfortunately, out of those seven fire stations, because we're covering such a broad area, five of those stations are only staffed with two people. And so, for example, the Yukon Harbor Station down in Manchester, it has a, has a EMT and a company officer, two firefighters. And when they leave the fire station, there's nobody there. We're coming from another fire station somewhere else. And so as we've planned this through our, our planning, we would consolidate our fire station, our staff fire stations from seven down to five through this process and be more efficient in that area and core them up. What that does is that gets us two units in those stations. Oftentimes it'll be a paramedic ambulance, ALS, advanced life support, or a fire engine in those. So that'll help. And then the other one is investment in the South Kitsap future and being able to build the infrastructure for a growing community that we see, that you all see through what the work we do for our citizens and the growth model that's going on. Those, that's the need for the stations. We also talked, I talked a little bit about the public safety complex. That's the infrastructure of South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, just like City Hall. We have a main building, a main campus that we work on. We have our, our fleet, our fleet area where we have our auto shop. We have supply and inventory that has to be managed. This building and complex that we have up on Furcrest was also built in the 60s. It's been remodeled and remodeled, remodeled, and we've had a look at it. And we're at the point now where this building is a major overhaul. And it would be completely rebuilt from the ground up to house all of our staff and bring them into one place. It would also serve as the district's operations center during a major disaster. For like we were hit last night where we were running and we had to run our own calls and have people coming in and had to set up our own emergency operations center here. That's the need for the public safety complex. The question is, is where are we going to put these? We've been working on this, Chief Wright, and now moving into my administration. We have been working on this plan and to be ready. And so through the last couple of years, we want to make sure that we have the property. As you know, with fire stations, you can't just go out and say, well, give me any property that's three acres or more. We need them in specific locations and we need them located close to major thoroughfares. And so we have been working hard through our capital planning and things we've done. We have purchased about three acres down at the intersection of Woods and Mile Hill, better known where PJ's Market is. We have not closed on PJ's Market. We're doing some studies on that one, but we have property surrounding it. And that's where we build one of these stations. We've also purchased property down at Bethel and Mullenex. Bethel Burley and Mullenex, we have 10 acres there to build a fire station in that area. And then off the old Clifton, we didn't need to purchase that. That's property that we have worked through in agreement with the city of Port Orchard next to the water park. And so that is one of the sites that we would build. And then of course, the Furcrest Drive Station. As we do that, these stations would consolidate. So the two stations, Yukon Harbor and the headquarters fire station on Furcrest would consolidate. We'd move to the Woods and Mile Hill and then the Bethel stations that one further down, way down in the, I'm going to say almost a Pierce County, but Bethel Burley and Burley La La, that station and our station near, closer to Fred Meyer would consolidate up to the new site at Mullenex. The old Clifton site, that one is, we plan on staffing that. It's a matter of where we, we will have to move either from the Glenwood site or from the Gorse site. And that one, because it's going to be one of the last ones we would build, we're still on the, trying to figure out which one's best. And that really comes down to annexations and call volume and things that are happening around us. So we know that one of those two stations would move up to the old Clifton site with some additional staffing, but it would be staffed as well. This plan also calls for seismic upgrades and part of that seismic upgrades is for the station at Tremont, the Port Orchard Fire Station, what used to be the Port Orchard Fire Station. We would do a major seismic upgrade on that along with our Banner Fire Station, our Glenwood Fire Station and the Gorse Fire Station. And we would do all of those seismic and get everything up to date to make sure that we are up to date on that. The big question is, what does this bond cost and what does it look like? This is a $39.5 million bond that would be out to the public. We've got it on a 20-year bond. And that bond would be 17 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation to a property owner. This is a net increase of just $21 per year for the owner of a $300,000 home in South Kitsap. Some of you, they're probably looking at that, doing the math, going 17 cents, $300,000 should be somewhere around $51. The key there is a net increase. We're factoring in the apparatus and equipment bond that was at 30 cents already. And so it was already at 10 cents currently. And that bond rolls off or it's paid off at the end of this year. So with an approval of proposition one, the net increase for citizens from what they're paying today is, is $21 per year on that $300,000 house, depending on where your, your math is. We look forward, we, we have, we look forward to this. We know that we're just trying to get the information out. COVID has not helped for us. We are able to get out into the in-person meetings and to the community events and those. But we know that this is one of those things where it's a tough decision for our public. It's a tough decision even at a time like this. But this problem isn't going to go away for the fire district. And no matter which way that this goes, decisions will have to be made in the future on our facilities. We have a couple of facilities that the water isn't sustaining, the potable water, the water for the crews and the stations, septic systems are failing. The buildings just are not there. In fact, when we're done here, if you get a chance later, we've just posted a video on our website that we have created that shows more in detail what the stations look like on the inside and the things that we're doing. We also believe that this really sets us up for the future for South Kitsap and our community. By putting stations in strategic locations, getting people where the citizens are moving to and putting us right into those areas so that we can drop and lower our response times and be more efficient for our, for our citizens. I look forward to this. I look forward to, you know, the, the, the community support. They've been very supportive for us. We're trying to be as responsible as we can. We're not coming out asking for complete overhaul of the entire fire district. We picked the big areas that we need or the big stations that need to be addressed and try to make this in a bite-sized fashion, if you will. With that, I'd like to turn it over to my commissioner, Commissioner Wiley. If you have anything there that you would like to add. And then I could take questions or what we want to do there, Mr. Mayor, on the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, no, I'd like to just say that we've worked on this for a lot of years and I think we've got everything in the right position where we're going to put these things. And Chief has covered everything real good. But I just want you to remember that this is $21 a year on a $300,000 assessed value of your house. That's pretty cheap for all the improvements we'll get. We've got all of our equipment brought up to date. They were falling apart. Now our stations are falling apart. And so would appreciate your help in whatever you can do for us. Thank you.
Questions for Chief Fawcett? Chief, I, my only comment in your presentation, I, great presentation, but I don't know, there's, there's too many $300,000 houses left in South Kitsap. You might want to
I could, I can bump that up.
Bump that up and then the comparison be a little, you know, median, I think, is pushing 400 anymore.
I can, I can certainly do that. And I will be honest with you, you guys are my third presentation. So thank you for your grace and your open comments. I appreciate that.
Do they have questions or comments for, for Chief Fawcett? Councilman Clausen?
Just a comment, I think it's long overdue and I wish you guys luck and I'll do whatever I can to support you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, John. Chief, cancel your presentation screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will do that.
I'd like to thank you.
That's why I'm here to keep an eye on him.
And I gotta tell you, I'm going to be honest, I don't have a cancel screen. Is that? Found it.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief, for coming and seeing us this evening. And this is on the ballot in November.
November 3rd, that's right.
All right, got some work to do.
We do. And with that, I do have another presentation at seven o'clock. So I need to bump off and get to that meeting if there's no other questions for me.
Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, we're off to our, our business items. And the first of which is adoption of an ordinance, amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget. And Mr. Cracker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city budget is written to capture revenue and expenses over the fiscal year. During the biennial period changes to the budget and both revenue expansions need to be recognized by budget amendment. The proposed budget amendment is intended to capture corrections as well as significant changes that were not included in the original 1920 budget. With the budget amendment tonight, the highlights we have included are increasing expenditure authority for our debt service fund. There was an interest payment that was not included in the original budget. So this is a house clean, housekeeping item. We have additional expenditure authority paying for the Bethel Road property purchases, which is coming up later in this evening's meeting. But the budget man captures the three funds that are involved in purchasing that property, Fund 111, Fund 304, and the remaining bond proceeds held in the 304 fund. And then lastly, the amendment captures additional activity in the Tremont project as we're coming to a close here. The budget amendment for Tremont is intended again to give us enough expenditure authority to close out the project. Hopefully this month, so we look forward to that completion as well.
Lost you there for a minute, Noah. Back.
Last, so with this budget amendment, I'm happy to take questions, but the finance director would recommend adoption of the ordinance, amending the 1920 biennial budget.
Question, Councilmember Clausen?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, that this was discussed a little bit earlier this evening at the finance committee. And you know, we're certainly supportive of it. The comment regarding the transfer of fund for the acquisition of the properties on Bethel, although that's a future action. We also discussed that and I'm sure we'll be talking more about it as the agenda goes on here. But I'm supportive of that as well.
Do you have a motion for us by chance?
I do. With that, then I would move to adopt ordinance, whatever the number is. My agenda doesn't have a number, amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Kuchardi. Do you have an, a ordinance number for that yet, Brandy?
No, we'll assign it after the adoption of the meeting tonight.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. And any further questions about these budget amendments? Noah cut out there a little bit. You can see in the, in the body of this that it's primarily Tremont house cleaning is the majority of what these budget amendments relate to.
And the acquisition of
And the acquisition of the Bethel property, which are transportation related.
Right.
Yes.
So with the purchase, sorry, I did cut out there, there was an element that is for storm drainage. And so again, we'll use the 423 Stormwater Capital Project Fund as the third participant in that purchase.
Any questions for Mr. Cracker or myself? Okay, hearing none, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance, amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. Run to item B, which is adoption of an ordinance, ratifying proclamation and emergency order suspending Port Orchard Municipal Code chapters 6.20 prohibiting single-use plastic bags. Ms. Archer, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening back on the agenda is the item to ratify the mayor's proclamation of emergency related to the suspension of a chapter in the municipal code prohibiting the use of single-use plastic bags. You'll recall that the city had adopted a prohibition, but CDC guidance is to suspend those types of prohibitions because the use of single-use plastic bags is vital in, during the COVID pandemic. Council considered this at a previous meeting and requested that it come back with a ratification and a prospective suspension of chapter 6.20 through the end of the year, contemplating that this emergency is likely not to cease until after the, the end of this year. So this new revised ordinance would ratify the mayor's proclamation and the extension of his proclamation and then So this new revised ordinance would ratify the mayor's proclamation and the extension of his proclamation and then prospectively suspend the provisions of Port Orchard Municipal Code six point two zero until eleven fifty-nine P M on December thirty first, twenty twenty. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for our attorney or possibly a motion? Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance ratifying the mayor's emergency proclamation and temporary suspension of Chapter six point two zero of the Port Orchard Municipal Code prohibiting single-use plastic bags and to extend the suspension to the end of twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe on this matter. Any questions or comments regarding this? Councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, just a comment, December thirty first. It's not that far away. It's unbelievable how quickly this year's going behind us, and I don't recollect recall what our last business meeting is. You got the holidays in there, so we should probably just put this on the calendar to be prepared to extend this at one of our normal business meetings in December, if that's the case.
It'll be the third week in December. Like that for. Because we'd hate to have to come back on Christmas Eve to do this. No. All right, that was a good good comment. Other comments or questions? All right, with that, you'd be voting on adoption of an ordinance ratifying proclamation and emergency order suspending Port Orchard Municipal Codes Chapter six point two oh prohibiting single-use plastic bags. All in favor, say aye. And the opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. On to item C, which is adoption of a resolution approving mayoral appointments to the Lodging Tax Advising Committee. Clerk Reinderson?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Though pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code two point two two and state law, the city council shall review the membership of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee annually and make appropriate changes by recommendation of the mayor. The mayor is recommending a representative from the following organizations/businesses to serve on the LTAC upon council's acceptance. A business required to collect the tax would be Red Lion Inn and Suites, as well as Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast. An organization involved in the activities would be Fathoms of Fun and Port Orchard Bay Street Association. On August twentieth, twenty nineteen, council adopted Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen, appointing Councilmember Rosa Pepe as the chair of the committee. Staff recommends that the council approve the mayor's recommendations to the appointment of the members as well as as well as the chair confirmation as presented.
And just how I came to those two organizations, we went one, we have to have a like number to the hoteliers, to the nonprofits, and it works out to about, I try to cycle through all of the nonprofits that receive it, and so this is about, it works out to about a three-year cycle. And I believe the representatives from those organizations, that'll be Sharon King from Fathoms of Fun and the president of the Bay Street Association is Corinne Haddock Johnson. Any additional questions for me? Or possibly a motion? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution approving the mayor's appointment of a representative from the Red Lions Inn and Suites and Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast as businesses required to collect the tax. Fathoms of Fun Festival Incorporated and Port Orchard Bay Street Association as organizations involved in activities to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and to confirm the reappointment of Councilmember Rosa Pepe as chair of the committee.
By Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Deener. Any additional questions on this matter? Hearing none, you'll be voting on the lodging tax appointees. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is passed. We are to our item D, adoption of a resolution, adopting the revision of the Kitsap County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Clerk Reinderson?
Yes, good evening. So in the first part of twenty twenty, Kitsap County Board of County Commissioners adopted the new twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is which was approved by the state in FEMA in late December of twenty nineteen. The department is now stepping away a little bit from the covid nineteen response to ensure the cities also adopt this plan as having it in place enables jurisdictions to apply for floodplain management and building resilience in communities, which is the BRIC grants available for application in September, as well as other grants that may become available. City departments played a significant role in the development of this new plan and the mitigation operations, and GIS officer will be working with cities throughout the year to track progress, identify sources for funding and other information to support completion of the mitigation priorities identified in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five plan. With that, staff recommends adoption of the resolution adopting the revision of the Kitsap County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
And this plan was worked through the Department of Emergency Management, and it seemed like an eternity to go that that board approved this last, end of last year, and since then, the states approved the plan. I believe the counties approved the plan, and and now the other member jurisdictions are being asked to approve the plan, and it will allow us, if we need to or want to, to pursue grant opportunities. Councilmember Clausen?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution adopting the revision to the Kitsap County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
A motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Chang. Additional questions on this matter? And the plan was very large, and it was sent in a separate email, and it's posted on our website for review. So with that, you'll be voting on a resolution to adopt revisions to the county's Kitsap County's Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. All in favor, say, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the plan and resolution have been approved. We are on to item E now, which is adoption of a resolution approving to approving a purchase and sale agreement with Kitsap County for Bethel Road Corridor Properties. Finance Director Cracker?
Thank you, Mayor. The city portrait has been discussions with the county for the purchase of railway necessary to do future improvements for the Bethel Street, including expansion of the roadway and stormwater drainage improvements. The improvements are included in the city of Port Orchard's comprehensive plan for both transportation and storm drainage improvements. The purchase includes five parcels identified in the purchase sale agreement, which is Exhibit A to this resolution and known as the Bethel Road Corridor Properties. The total appraisal value of the five properties is one million four hundred fifteen thousand dollars and identified between the five parcels. The city has negotiated the purchase price for the one million four hundred fifteen thousand for the five parcels and has agreed to pay appropriate closing costs for a total cost estimate of one million four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. As we discussed a little bit in the budget amendment, the property, if authorized, is going to be paid for from three funds. Fund Three O Four, which will use its remaining bond proceeds from the Tremont project of approximately five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. We're going to transfer transportation impact fee money from Fund One Eleven to Three O Four, and they will contribute three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars all to the eight hundred nine thousand dollars for the three parcels related to transportation improvements. And then lastly, two parcels are going to be paid for from Fund Four Twenty-three for the storm drainage capital for a total of five hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Staff would recommend that city council authorize the mayor to enter into purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of these properties identified in Exhibit A.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the purchase and sale agreement with Kitsap County for the acquisition of the properties identified in Exhibit A to the resolution known as the Bethel Road Corridor Properties.
I concur.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Clausen to approve the the purchase and sale agreement. Any questions or comments?
Just to comment that this is a great milestone.
It is. Ms. Archer, did you have a comment?
I did. I apologize. It appears that the resolution title and the body of the resolution refers to more tax parcel numbers than just the five. And so a friendly amendment to the the motion would be or to the the resolution, rather, would be to remove the superfluous tax parcel numbers and and solely refer to those that are in Exhibit A to the resolution, which is the purchase and sale agreement. And there are actually six parcels in total listed on that.
Okay, thank you for that correction, and I agree, Councilmember Deener. This is a huge step in the right direction, and we have, I believe, three grants that we've applied for this year, and hopefully we get one or more of them for Bethel Road improvements that'll be coming in the future.
Question or procedure? Do we need to concur with a friendly amendment?
I concur with that amendment to the motion.
The second does as well.
Thank you.
All right, we have a friendly amendment to the standing motion. Any more questions? Hearing none, we're voting on a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement with Kitsap County for the Bethel Road Corridor Properties. All in favors, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the the resolution is approved. So we are to item F, adoption of a resolution approving reimbursement to the city of Port Orchard of real property purchase expenditures paid by the city prior to financing. Mr. Cracker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council for taking action and authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase sale agreement. Business item seven F is a resolution declaring our desire and intent to have the flexibility to potentially finance this purchase at a future date. We're going to use cash from our funds at this point in time. But with this reimbursement resolution, if the council chooses to, as part of their capital plan, finance it through some type of borrowing, this document allows us to do so by declaring so now. So with that, this is just building this in additional flexibility as we develop the twenty-one twenty-two capital budget plan. And as we can, again, continue to look at our funding available. So we had did talk about this with the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee also incurred and recommended that we approve a reimbursement resolution for this purchase.
So Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the reimbursement to the city of real property purchase expenditures paid by the city prior to the financing of such expenditures.
Second.
A motion by my member, Councilmember Clausen, and a second by Councilmember Kuchardi for this reimbursement resolution, and I also see the numerous parcels listed in the body of this resolution that aren't necessary. So I would assume that those wouldn't be relevant in this resolution either. Was that your comment, Councilmember Ashby? Yes, okay. And, you know, a scenario, I could see us using this tool. We 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 did this when we did the Tremont borrowing, as we did. We incurred expenses and then paid ourselves back when we did a borrowing in the event that we get one of the grants and we go out and do a borrowing for our portion, it may make sense to to recuperate some of our cash to to use it in another manner that we don't see today. So it just gives us flexibility in that event that we move forward with one a project along that corridor.
Maybe by preserving our cash, it would provide us local match for a grant. Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, that's right. So other questions or comments on this matter? Okay, with that, you'll be voting on approving a reimbursement agreement for the Bethel property purchases. All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is passed. We're to item G, approval of change order one to contract number zero five seven dash two oh with Advanced Diving Services, Inc., for the twenty twenty in-service cleaning inspection potable water storage tanks using commercial divers. I talked about this in my mayor's report a couple of weeks ago that we found bonus things, bonus sediment, and Mr. Dorsey is going to talk about that. And you're muted, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Councilmembers. On June twenty-third, twenty twenty, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract number C zero five seven dash two zero with Advanced Diving or Services, Inc., for the twenty twenty in-service cleaning and inspection of our potable water storage tanks utilizing commercial divers in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. During dive operations, larger quantities of sediment were encountered, and therefore staff had no alternative but direct advanced diving to continue with their efforts. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order one to contract C zero five seven dash two zero with Advanced Diving Services in an amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, thereby bringing the total contract value to twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. I do want to point out that what we had allocated in the budget was twenty-five thousand, so we're only three thousand over not, you know, sixteen thousand.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number one to contract number C zero five seven dash twenty with Advanced Diving Services Incorporated in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, thereby bringing full contract value to twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Chang. Any questions of Mr. Dorsey on this matter? Okay, just necessary thing to do, and we just found more sediment than we anticipated in the tanks. So with that, you'll be voting on the motion to approve change order number one to with Advanced Diving Services for the reservoir cleaning and inspection services. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the change order has been approved. We're to our last business item, which is item H, approval of supplemental number one, agreement number one to contract number zero seven two dash eighteen with Tierra Right-A-Wave Services regarding the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, the city of Port Orchard contracted with Tierra Right-A-Wave Services Limited for the continuation of the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project Right-A-Way Acquisition Phase. Additional survey and title services associated with Thailand parcels are needed to update the right-of-way plan. Wash Dot Highway local programs have reviewed approved this supplemental request. Staff recommends authorization of mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one to contract C zero seven two dash one eight with Tierra Right-A-Wave Services Limited in the amount of twenty-five thousand thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one to contract number C zero seven two dash eighteen with Tierra Right-A-Wave Services Limited in the amount of twenty-five thousand and thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Deener and a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Questions for Mr. Dorsey?
I have a quick question. Where are these Thailand parcels located? They're primarily between their segment six, seven, eight, so from, let's say, the what is it, the tavern there at the end of segment five?
So from West Bay Center down to the corner. Parallel Perry Avenue.
Yeah, the ones that are kind of between Perry and Bay Street. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Dorsey, just giving an update. I know you submitted some drawings and some and additional documents to the state, I think, last week, so we're hoping to get the NEPA and our other environmental approvals, I think, fairly shortly, aren't we?
Yes, we we submitted everything that it's been a number of submittals and local programs keeps coming back for one additional thing. And then so we turned in everything that we thought was the end of it last week. Updated cross-sections that had to do with the Jersey barriers, removal of those. And then they wanted a document, another document today. So we sent that over. D C D had that document, so had to do with the shoreline hearing. So we're I'm hoping we're done as soon as we get through with this, then we're back to our acquisition phase.
And when the cross-sections mark is referring to is, once again, in that area that's paralleling And when the cross-sections Mark is referring to is, once again, in that area that's paralleling Perry. There were some concerns about Jersey barrier and now a noise bouncing off the Jersey barrier. And we've Found an alternative for that that'll, that'll not eliminate the need for the Jersey barrier with some planting and We still have to have a physical barrier there, but it won't be a Jersey barrier. So we found something much more attractive and shouldn't bounce sound back.
Do you know what the alternative safety barrier looks like?
We submitted a drawing. Yes, I've seen a picture of it. But yeah, it's, it's more of a cable barrier. But not the type you would see on the freeway. It's got to be a little bit taller.
Thank you.
I would just express appreciation to Mark for doing all the work he has on this Bay Street pedestrian path because it's a very, very important project of the city.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, if you don't have any other further questions, you'll be voting on agreement number one to contract number 072-18 With Tierra Right-A-Wave Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendment is approved. So we have two discussion items tonight, and they're both Mr. Bond. And the first has to do with Allowed zones for fireworks sales. So, Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight is an ordinance that the planning commission has reviewed and recommended. And when we started down the path of trying to fix a problem that we identified in the zoning code related to the 2019 Adoption of our new zoning code. Coronavirus hit and we had fewer fireworks stands apply for fireworks stand permits in 2020 than in past years. And so I wanted to revisit this topic with the full city council to figure out whether you wanted to proceed with the planning commission recommendation. Or whether you wanted to potentially look at other courses of action based on The loss of non-conforming status related to a handful of fireworks stands that did not operate in 2020. So the recommendation from the, the planning commission is to amend Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 20.39040. These are the land use tables that tell you what use is allowed in each of the zones. And add fireworks sales as an accessory use in the civic and institutional zone. And this One fireworks stand that historically had operated in Port Orchard was at the church near the Mitchell Y. And that church actually did not apply for a fireworks stand in 2020. And so we actually had realized that it was a legal non-conforming fireworks stand because they had operated seasonally for a number of years in a row. Going back to the time at which that was an approved location for fireworks stands. But it has now lost its non-conforming status. So the, the ordinance that is before you tonight would open it up so that all churches, Religious organizations, anything with a civic and institutional zone could host a fireworks stand going forward just during that, that short window for sales Around the Fourth of July. After the planning commission got this near completion, we, we took a look at who actually pulled permits for fireworks stands this year. And we realized that we issued one stand to a new location where we should not have issued it because it was not an allowed use at the time. That stand was relocating because the grocery outlet in their lease had leased up the parking lot and did not want to allow that fireworks stand where it had previously been located at the South Kitsap Mall. And then two other stands on Sedgwick near the taco truck that parks kind of at the top of the hill. And also just a little east of Ramsey between Ramsey and the gas station at the corner of Bethel and Sedgwick. Both of those fireworks stands did not come in for permits to sell fireworks this year. And so Those were non-conforming, legal non-conforming fireworks stands going into 2020. And they have now lost the ability to host a fireworks stand on those Couple of lots. As it stands today, we have eight legally non-conforming fireworks stands in the city that even though Whether the zoning allows them now or not, based on the language in our non-conforming use chapter, they are allowed to continue seasonally in perpetuity unless they skip A full season of fireworks sales. Really, the option here tonight is we can go forward with the planning commission recommendation, but that only Allows for one of the previously hosted fireworks stands to come back that has lost its status. The other stands would require further zoning changes. However, because it's, it's only September, there's plenty of time for us to notify previous applicants and property owners of the change in zoning to let them know In some cases where fireworks stands can continue to take place and where they can't happen going forward. And, and inform them that they need to find a new location in the commercial heavy zone or in the civic and institutional zone. And so the purpose of this discussion tonight is to see whether the council wanted to move forward with the ordinance that the planning commission had recommended. Knowing that only one of a, one of our civic and institutional properties in the city has ever previously hosted a fireworks stand, at least during my tenure with the city. Or whether you want us to simply notify the previous applicants that they may need to find a new location if there's an issue in terms of zoning relative to hosting a fireworks stand.
So the code would allow for eight, eight that are Basically grandfathered.
Correct. And, and three of those eight, I believe, are still permitted outright because they have the right zoning anyway. And there are plenty of commercial heavy properties throughout the city that could host a fireworks stand if these organizations got in touch with Whether it's Walmart or Safeway or Albertsons. Any of the, the big box retailers in the city are zoned for Commercial heavy and could host this, just like they often host Christmas tree lots. But, but we just want to get the word out now so that these, these applicants can find new locations for their I believe the applications are due in April every year in anticipation of the, the July window.
Okay, Councilmember Deener, then Councilmember Claussen, and then I'll call on Councilmember Ashby.
Nick, I was curious about the nature of the, of any testimony before the planning commission. Did anybody come and speak to this On behalf of the fireworks group?
No testimony.
Councilmember Claussen?
Nick, my question is you, you refer to eight and looking at your matrix you have here, I count nine. I must not be reading them correctly.
Correct. So one of those nines should not, it was a new location for 2020 and we should not have approved it Based on the, the zoning of that property. And so that was approved in error. So we would want to Notify them that they can't relocate in that location again next year because their permit in 2020 was issued incorrectly.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, Mike, if you help me, Nick, remember what you said. And that is, I thought you were going to change this churches and civic properties so that they could Work stands and that there was one church in the past that has had a fireworks stand. Is that correct?
Correct. The ordinance that the planning commission has voted to recommend, which was actually based on, they didn't have the information about who was approved in 2020. But that would allow fireworks stands as an accessory use in the civic and institutional zone. Meaning that there has to be a primary use of the property. So it can't be on vacant property. There has to be either a church or a school or some other Some other user who inhabits that property who's kind of there to keep an eye on things. So I could envision there's a church on Tremont that potentially could host a fireworks stand. There's a church on Old Clifton Road Out near McCormick Woods that could potentially host a stand. But most of our churches actually aren't on very high volume roads. I think the, the church on Mitchell. It has some traffic, but certainly not to the degree that Cedric or Bethel or Mile Hill would have with regard to selling fireworks.
I guess my comment on that, because I did understand it correctly, is I'm not inclined to add that Opportunity for the churches without Pulling them first to find out if they're interested in, in being able to have fireworks there. I don't know why we would just automatically Because one fireworks stand happened to be at a church a few years ago, just automatically make it that churches or civic Properties could have fireworks stands. I'm, I'm not particularly supportive of that.
Councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, I was actually going to say the exact same thing as Councilmember Ashby. I don't know why with, without the evidence of demand, why we would go in wholesale change. You know, one of these use categories, I would, I would agree and not go down that road.
An alternative be that there's one, because there's one right now that does it and we grandfather the one that's there.
And they lost their designation, it sounds like.
Oh, it sounds like they did. That's right. So there weren't any churches at all this last year, Nick?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so if, if the rest of the council agrees with Councilmember Ashby and Kuchardi, I think my recommendation would just be that we notify those folks that can no longer Host fireworks stands where they previously hosted them and tell them, send them a map that says these are the properties where you can You can reach out to owners and see if they're willing to, to allow you to have a fireworks stand. And if they come back and can't find locations, maybe then we need to look at expanding The scope of things. But I think for right now, maybe we ought to just see, see what they can figure out based on our existing zoning code.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I, I thought we had previously discussed trying to Limit number of stands. So I think under, if we remove that from the CI designation, I Fully support the heavy industrial and leave it at that.
I'm behind that as well.
And, and I assume you mean heavy commercial, not heavy industrial.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Thank you, Nick.
You very, there'd be no place for these in the heavy industrial.
Thank you.
So any objections? I'm hearing the majority wished to remove that designation. And so Mr. Bond will bring that back at a future meeting. This is just a discussion item.
Well, and hopefully not. I think that I'm just going to send the letters to those individuals who have to find new locations. And if it becomes a problem, I'll bring it back to you. But otherwise, you hopefully won't have to hear about it again.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to enforce the code as written and not modify the code. Is that what I'm hearing, Nick?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. You may not hear about this again. All right, we have two. The second item is a discussion item on the Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan and Development Regulations. So this is you again, Mr. Bond.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may beforehand, and I'm not quite sure, I'm going to defer to our city attorney. We're talking about development Regulations for an area the Kitsap Transit is investigating the potential of a park and ride lot. So I'm not quite sure if I should Recuse myself from this discussion or At least I want to make sure that folks are aware of it. So I defer to the city attorney.
I think you're probably okay, but I'll, because it's a discussion item and you're not voting on it, but I'll let the attorney weigh in on it.
So Kitsap Transit is considering to purchase the property about which we're discussing modifications to the code?
Yes, within that area.
Okay. I would probably suggest that you recuse yourself from that conversation, given your affiliations.
So in a Zoom meeting, should I just mute and stop my video and?
I think that's sufficient. Yeah, we're kind of making it up as we go, but I think that's sufficient.
If you want to be safe and just leave the meeting, Mr. Claussen, I will let you know when you can come back and Brandy will let you back in.
Either way, if you want to send me a text, I could do that too.
Yep, okay.
I guess I'll just leave.
Okay. All right.
All right. And Brandy, I have a short presentation I'd like to share if you can give me permission. I don't know if that's set up yet or not.
I just did.
All right, so Let me get this to full screen. All right, can everybody see the presentation I've shared?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So I wanted to refresh everybody's memory on this project. I know the land use committee has seen this already. We embarked on a project to write a Ruby Creek Subarea Plan last November. And the reason that we did this is that it was part of our, our department work plan and also because our comprehensive plan Identified several areas throughout the city to become centers. And those are areas where we want to focus Housing and employment growth within the city. There's some potential benefits to being a center as it relates to traffic funding through PSRC. How, how big those benefits are, it seems like it's, it's evolving as time goes on. But regardless, we wanted to set out to implement what's in our comprehensive plan and prepare a neighborhood plan for the area that is generally Between Hubd Road and Cedric Road along Sydney Road Southwest. And so We began this project in November, as I mentioned, and we hired Makers Architecture who helped write the city design standards to Do a constraints analysis for the subarea boundary. And, and they started by looking at all of the critical areas, which you have Ruby Creek and Blackjack Creek As well as the freeway and the existing road pattern. And we clicked, we quickly realized that the, the variation between possible alternatives is not very great because there's such a limited potential For, for any type of construction of an additional road network. We did look at connecting the, the road that serves the Lowe's access and trying to tie that into the center to create greater circulation. But we quickly realized that that project was Environmentally difficult and very expensive because of the cost of constructing a bridge and mitigating impacts within the stream corridor. So we quickly settled on a preferred alternative in reviewing this with the planning commission. And we, we broke the neighborhood into three different areas. It was a central, a north and a south area. The central area is just north of Sedgwick and south of the Ruby Creek Stream. And this was intended to be the, kind of the heart of the neighborhood and the commercial hub. And we set out to create kind of a small downtown feel to the neighborhood that would be walkable with on-street parking In a mix of housing and commercial space. The environmentally sensitive areas to the east of the, of, of really what is developable. There's a large wetland complex, there's flood plains, there's streams. And so we figured that that was probably Destined to become some sort of open space park type facility. And so we planned trails. We did identify the desire to put a bridge across Ruby Creek to create a walking loop in the neighborhood. And we're continuing to, to evaluate The possibility of putting a park here in our parks planning effort. But for, for subarea planning purposes, we know that we want a park in the neighborhood. We had our consultant help us with a 3D rendering of the subarea that shows You can do mixed use or a single, single-story shop front buildings, but they are intended to be out near the street. And we really just tried to make this walkable, make sure that driveways are aligned and that we have a good streetscape and Pedestrian environment to, to harness what is already a pretty good concentration of residents that live at the existing apartment complexes in the neighborhood. To accomplish this, you attach to the ordinance before you tonight is some changes to the development regulations. And one of those changes is to make the Sydney Road section in the central Ruby Creek area A storefront street. And this is what requires the buildings to actually be brought out to the street To create that walkable, compact kind of feel to the neighborhood. And so that's, that's one of the handful of, of changes to the development regulations that are needed to implement this plant, plan Along with some zoning changes in the central portion of, of the corridor. Another issue and Councilmember Claussen alluded to this before we began. And we talked about this with the consultant for Kitsap Transit a couple of months ago. Is that they have settled on two finalist sites for a possible park and ride facility. And so this, we learned of this about midway through the planning process for Ruby Creek. And so we We adapted the plan and identified that a park and ride facility was a suitable alternative within this central area. Provided that the frontage along Sydney was left for the development of commercial pads or mixed-use type shop front buildings. And so the back half of this property, which is currently commercial mixed use and commercial corridor. Currently, it would allow apartments or commercial development. We are adding park and ride facility to the list in the event that Kitsap Transit decides to proceed With trying to locate a transit facility in this neighborhood. And typically transit hubs are a good feature to include in a, a center where you're trying to concentrate growth because it creates activity. And it creates a hub for providing efficient transit service. When you head to the north end of the corridor. This is the east, the west side of the road is largely undeveloped. Earlier this summer, you actually approved a permit for a noise violation where they had a concert, I think, until midnight or one in the morning. But the, the goal here is, is that even though this land is zoned commercial mixed use, the market right now is not Resulting in the development of a lot of commercial property. And so while the while the the frontage buildings could end up as mixed-use buildings, in all likelihood, this area is going to be multifamily housing and provide a significant amount of amount of housing for shipyard workers, people commuting to the Southworth Ferry or or going into Bremerton for employment opportunities. And again, the same street frontage is continued in the north end, but it is a little bit, there's more landscaping and less hardscape. So it's a, it's, this is actually a landscape block frontage in this area. And the the project for the the northeast quadrant of the subarea, they're about to submit building permit applications for that. And I'm I'm told that originally they were aiming for 235 units, and I think that's down to closer to 200 units. But nonetheless, that appears to be moving forward, and we're expecting a submittal any day. And whether the subarea plan is adopted or not, we've really, we worked with them to try to steer their design in the direction that we were taking the subarea plan. And they were happy to do that. And so we've kind of, we've worked in tandem with this developer to make sure that this plan doesn't preclude them from doing what they've been working on for the last six months. This is another rendering of the the north end of the subarea. These are generic apartment buildings. Obviously, they they're probably not all going to look quite the same, but this is, this is what our our limited budget could could give us. As you head further north, I mentioned the the landscape block frontage as you head out of the north end of the subarea. We did get quite a few comments from residents on Berry Lake Road and also Birch Road, talking about the pedestrian. If we're going to add a bunch of people at the south end of Sydney, we need to make sure that that the improvements continue to the north so that that additional traffic doesn't impact the people who live there and that they also have an opportunity to walk to school and to walk into the neighborhood. So we did make some adjustments in the last iteration of the plan to reflect those comments that we received. And in the south end of Ruby Creek, really, there's only one undeveloped property remaining, and it's the the southwest quadrant of the Sydney-Sedgwick intersection. Rush Development has actually applied for building permits to build the these live-work units at the corner, as well as a coffee stand on the corner here. And so kind of like the northeast quadrant of the the subarea, this we worked with the developer and made sure we didn't do anything that was going to hurt their project. And and we tried to explain the direction that the subarea was going, and they they adapted their plans to sort of anticipate what we were hoping to see. And so it was a very collaborative discussion. And again, the rendering of this is you would have, these are actually live-work units on the ground floor. So you can live in the in the ground floor and have an office or a storefront, or you can convert the entire unit into a commercial space. And so they were willing to to design a building that provided that level of flexibility. We did some analysis on land capacity, and we're not actually changing the land use map in the plan, but we are changing some of the zoning. We're actually applying our downtown mixed-use zone in that central corridor because that allows for greater lot coverage and and also requires more of the building to be out to the street. But everything behind beyond the first 120 feet off of Sydney Road retains its existing zoning. And we evaluated which properties were vacant and underutilized and likely to redevelop. That's a figure that's in there. And then we did the land capacity analysis, which was somewhat rudimentary in terms of of we just looked at each individual parcel and we looked at previous conversations we'd had with developers about what is likely to occur. For instance, parcel A, we had an assumption because we had met with a developer who was planning 235 apartments there. And that was the assumption we carried forward, and we did this for several other properties in the plan. And in terms of streetscape, there's the the central corridor, as I mentioned, is the commercial storefront where you have widened sidewalks and landscaping, as well as on-street parking and then a center turn lane or median. Once you head north in the corridor, you get a softer landscape strip along the road with with grass in between the trees, making it a little bit greener. And where you cross Ruby Creek itself, the road actually narrows to minimize the impacts because that that culvert is is we've actually applied for a grant to replace that culvert. And when we put the culvert back, we're going to build this road section over the top of it. So this is consistent with a grant that we've already applied for. And that's the the culvert design that we submitted with our our grant application. We did provide that stormwater facilities could be constructed in the right-of-way and a low-impact development fashion, and that's something that's required per our our stormwater permit that we we accept these sorts of improvements. And so this is something that that can take place in the corridor and that we're encouraging. And in terms of development, we have currently 464 existing residents and 371 existing jobs in this corridor. We are planning for a total of 1,816 residents, including the existing residents that are there, and 652 total jobs in the corridor based on the square footage of commercial retail-type uses. And that results in a split of activity units, which it's it's 73% housing and 27% commercial at full buildout, which is still consistent with the PSRC criteria for being a countywide center. We we determined there's about 100 acres of developable are a total acreage that's not encumbered by critical areas. Of that, about 65 acres is developable as it stands now. And as I mentioned, it's it's once you convert from population to housing, it's about 647 additional housing units and the total population. So that's the the presentation. I I did want to say that we did receive quite a few comments as well about the Sedgwick Road corridor and the need to fix the traffic problem there at the Lowe's stoplight. I think all of you have probably received emails about that in the last few years as things have really backed up. What we told commenters in the planning commission process was that the washout interchange has to get fixed first because we don't actually know how bad our segment of Sedgwick is until you fix the bottleneck at the freeway. So the goal that is found in the transportation element of the subarea plan says that we need to continue to make the interchange a top lobbying priority in terms of pushing the state to make that a top priority. And then and that once the state has fixed its problem, the city needs to look at Sedgwick Road and determine if more lanes are needed or if it just needs to be a multimodal road with pedestrian and bicycle improvements through the corridor. So it's we didn't have the budget to actually go out and do a real detailed traffic analysis, and we certainly didn't hire wetland biologists or other consultants on this project. We, some of the property owners initially were upset that we showed wetlands on certain properties where where they had 10-year-old or 20-year-old wetland delineations that said otherwise. We we added a disclaimer to the beginning of the plan that says that all the wetlands shown in this plan are for calculating capacity only, that all property is developable in accordance with the Critical Areas Code, and it's everyone's responsibility to prepare the appropriate documentation when they develop their property to determine the full extent of of development potential. So I think we've, we've, we did a pretty good job of addressing the public's concern. And what we're hoping at this point, barring questions or concerns from the city council, is that this would be ready for consideration and a vote on the 22nd of September. And with that, I will happily answer any questions you have.
Just from Councilmember Ashby. You unmute yourself first. Beck, you need to unmute yourself.
I had lost my, I had lost myself. I had lost the meeting. First of all, I want to say that I thought our community development department had done a really, really great job on this. I appreciated all the effort and work had had gone into it with the limited financial resources that the city provided them. Just as a housekeeping note, and I had mentioned this to Nick earlier today, when I read the park settlement, it refers to a couple of baseball fields being owned by Little Lake. And it's my understanding, and we should probably seek clarification, but I believe those properties are owned by the county and leased by South Kids Upwestern Little Lake. So we would just want to make sure that we had that correction in the actual plan if we, when, when and if we adopt it. My other I have two other comments, and one is I want to make sure that when we do the subarea plan, that we don't make the requirements for the developers too expensive so that it's difficult for them to make their projects viable. I have seen us and other jurisdictions do that in the past in that they have all of these wish lists that they put out there. And it makes it a little too expensive. And I just want to make sure, and it did not appear to me that we had done that. But I just wanted to make sure that we do not. My other question was about the central area, which is going to have the storefront or multi-use development along Sydney. And I know this plan has been put together over the course of the last few months when we've been dealing with the pandemic. And I'm wondering how viable storefronts like that will be in the future. I know that the last few months, the city has been able to make its financial stability because of our large box stores. And I would not want to see a large, a box store or a a retail outlet that be precluded from that area. Now, I understand they would have to meet our design guidelines and meet all of the rest of the criteria. But I want to make sure that they're not precluded from this plan.
Right. So I can answer that question, and it it has a couple of prongs. First of all, I I didn't mention in the presentation, but one of the one of the policies that is suggested in the plan is to offer the multifamily tax exemption in this area. And we're separately working on updating the multifamily tax exemption code, and that's actually scheduled to be on the work-study agenda next week. And we're, we're really trying to encourage one of the ways to qualify for the eight-year multifamily tax exemption is to build these mixed-use type buildings. And so we are offering, we are suggesting that we offer the economic incentive essentially to help subsidize the development of the commercial space in this corridor. And in terms of sales tax revenue, I think the the important thing to remember is that the, if you take the site, whether it's Walmart or Fred Meyer, and you look at the building, you look at the valuation in terms of property tax revenue that we receive from those sites, the property tax is low relative to to other sites that have a more intense type of development on them. And so the buildings that we're showing in this plan are likely to result in higher assessed valuation and higher property tax revenue, but lower sales tax revenue based on the square footage and the type of occupancy. And so you're, you're by moving in the direction of the single-story shopfront or mixed-use shopfront of the square footages that are indicated here, you are are trading property tax for sales tax revenue to some degree. But on those same notes, we, the commercial corridors on properties within this area, which the the southern portion of the central area is still zoned commercial corridor, that allows retail spaces up to 50,000 square feet. And so and by conditional use, you can go above 50,000 square feet. So we still allow for the development of that type of retail. It would look a little bit different in terms of bringing buildings to the street. And they have done some more urban-style big-box developments previously. I don't know whether that would be viable here. But with the amount of of apartments that are coming into this area, we want to make sure that people have something that they can walk to. Because otherwise, you're going to end up with the parking demand being so great that there isn't sufficient room with the critical area buffers to actually park those types of buildings. So I think it does balance those interests. The renderings all show something that is is a little bit more of a mixed-use type building. And we're trying to offer the incentives to help get that built in the hopes that we get a long-term, sustainable source of property tax revenue.
The other comment I wanted to make is we have so much development on the west side of 16 that it would be nice that in this commercial area that we have, and I don't know what they may be doing out at McCormick Woods. But it's, it would be nice if they had services available to them on the west side of 16 so that they don't have to travel across Sedgwick or Tremont to get to, you know, goods and services.
Because they're apt to probably drive down the freeway to Gank Harbor or Silverdale. So that's was part of our logic in fixing Tremont to keep our shoppers local. So I have, I do have it in a, many of us, I think, know Dick Brown. He's a commercial developer, and he owns property in this area. And early on in this process, he was very critical of of this process and what we were doing. He's quite often quite critical of Mr. Bond and is was not bashful about telling me that Mr. Bond doesn't know what he's doing. And and last week, Mr. Mr. Brown called me and told me that Mr. Bond did an exceptional job in this process and had all kinds of nice things to say about Mr. Bond. And after I picked myself up off the floor, I I called him back up and asked if he was feeling okay, and he said he was. So but Nick got a compliment from Dick Brown, and that was a long time coming. So good job, Nick.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Bond? Scott?
So Nick, on page 76, you provided the map of the self-storage units and I where they would be allowed. Is that being changed at all?
Yeah, so previously, a couple of the properties in the very north end of the subarea allowed storage units. And so to be consistent with the subarea where we're trying to create a more walkable area, we are actually removing those couple of properties from the self-storage overlay district where the the self-storage units are allowed. So those are now only allowed a little bit further north in the corridor, but not within the subarea itself.
Okay, and and then I understand the height throughout the subarea plan area is 55 feet. Is that correct?
That is correct. So five stories or 55 feet. However, our existing transfer of development right ordinance, which still no one has ever used it, does allow for the purchase of height bonuses. So you can go taller than five stories if you agree to buy development rights from the rural part of the county and transfer those into the city, and you get a pretty good bonus in terms of if you buy one development right, you end up with like 12, 12 units of housing in the city based on the square footage that 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 provides.
Okay. I think the only other question I had was was if you could characterize the public hearing before the planning commission and what that final vote looked like.
My recollection was that it was unanimous, but I believe we were missing two of the planning commissioners at that meeting, or maybe even three. We we did have quite a bit of testimony and between the downtown subarea plan, which was on the agenda for a scoping public meeting and this meeting, we actually had the most well-attended public hearing and probably since since I arrived in Port Orchard in 2013. So there is quite a bit of testimony compared to the average thing that the planning commission discusses. And we did try to address, you know, some people like to say, I don't like this, or I don't want the change, but they're not specific in terms of what their concerns are. But where we had specific comments, we did our best to adjust the goals and policies to try to tackle those public concerns head-on.
I also want to thank DCD for their work on this. I think this was a a very well-done effort in a short period of time. I mean, it wasn't too long ago that we were talking about giving birth to a subarea plan here, and here we are. So thank you for good work.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Okay, not, I'm going to invite Mr. Clausen back. And we will head into committee reports. I'm going to go backwards since finance is first and Mr. Clausen is the chair of finance. So land use, I I understand you're struggling with the meeting date and you're looking at different dates. I don't believe you've met since our last council meeting, and I'm not.
On August 31st.
You settled on August 31st?
We we met last week.
You met last week. Okay. Does somebody have a report?
Yeah, I believe you were there for part of it. We spoke about seven items. Two of them were on tonight's as as discussion items. The ones that you haven't heard yet are about the donation policy that will be coming to council. We, we liked what we saw. Then we had a virtual tour of the projected growth from Director Bond. It was almost as good as a real live tour. It was, he handles his overlays and maps very well. Then there is three more items. One was the discussion of McCormick Meadows. One was the discussion of McCormick Meadows. Then the downtown subarea plan, we had the survey results. And finally, we talked again about the multifamily tax abatement code revisions. And all of those will be coming to council either in work-study or as discussion items.
Sure. Okay, thank you for your report. I know sewer advisory hasn't met, and they meet on the 16th, and utilities is on the 15th. We have economic development and tourism. You're scheduled for the 14th. I don't believe you've met since, since our last council meeting. And I'm kind of stalling for Mr. Clausen to give his report.
Hey Mayor, back to the land use committee. Did you want to discuss dates for future meetings during this?
I think we guys can do that offline versus the whole committee. And there is Councilman Clausen, and we are ready, we, for your finance committee report, if you'd like to give it.
Well, I think we gave most of it already with some of the actions that we took tonight with Bethel and some of the changes to the revision to the budget. I will share that we reviewed the sales tax receipts for August. And it's continuing to come in actually better than we anticipated. I think overall, 20 year-over-year changes were just, just shy of 5% over what we had anticipated, which is good. We also talked about the refunding and recognizing that for the first two, three months of COVID, the building industry pretty much shut down. But even with that in mind, we're still pretty close to where we wanted to be. So, other than that, we did talk a bit about some CARES funding, and, and I think the mayor is going to touch on that with his report later. And Noah gave us a quick update on the budget process for the 21, 22. By any, basically staff and the mayor are working on that, and they anticipate handing it to us first part of October. So, I guess the only other thing is that we're just about to start annual audit by the state auditors. Seemed like we just finished the last one, but I guess we're in time for the next one. So beyond that, I think, like I said, we pretty much touched on everything else as far as the budget property, or excuse me, the Bethel Road property acquisitions and then the changes to the budgets. Other members, if you have anything to add, feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Clausen. And jump to the mayor's report, and I got a few things. The Port Orchard CARES grants, last week I delivered, hand-delivered many of the checks. And I had two downtown business owners that actually got a little teary-eyed and they're showing their appreciation and gratitude for what we were providing to their business. And today I approved a handful of the contracts for the Phase 2 applications. And we're going to be within $7,000 to $10,000 of that $100,000 mark that you approved. And so I'm pretty pleased with that, that, that program. We last week learned that we were given another, an additional $216,000 in CARES funds, or CARES Act funds from the state. I'm trying to figure out how we can spend those dollars. The, probably the, the most logical thing we could do is, you know, we gave $100,000 to the business community, potentially some utility assistance could be maybe of a similar magnitude. I think that we could purchase some additional laptop-type and surface and laptop-type devices to make more of our employees able to telework, enable them to telework. And our phone system is getting outdated. And I think there's an opportunity to give us more flexibility with our phone system, too, by replacing it. So we were going to bring something back after the first of the year and the next budget, but it might get fast-tracked faster if we can find a way to fund this with the, with the CARES Acts funding. I've talked to Housing Kitsap about rental assistance, and the county gave them a couple of weeks ago about a half a million dollars. So there isn't much of a need there. I called case, I've reached out to Kitsap Community Resources. They haven't gotten back to me, but they had recently gotten, communicated with Noah about our 1406 program that we created. They haven't used any of that because they've got so many dollars that are the CARES dollars that they need to deploy that have a, that are time constrained, has, have a time constraint to them where our funds don't. And so they're, they're concentrating on getting those dollars out. So I think we've kind of done what we can with the small business grants, and we're looking into potentially some home rehab program, but I'm not positive that that's going to work either. So I'm open to any, you don't have to give it to me tonight, but any ideas you have, you know, please get, get them to me, I think, by next council meeting. I need to have a pretty firm plan. These dollars have to be documented and put to work before the end of November. So seems like a long ways away, but when you start doing procurement and, you know, working through contracts with our legal counsel and the other side's legal counsel, it takes time. And I don't think we could put together another grant program with another outside agency. If we're able to do utility assistance, we're probably doing it in-house. And, you know, and rightly so, Finance Director Crocker has concerns. What things aren't we going to get done if we take on this, this task? So that's, that's what I, any comments or questions on that? Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, and I know we talked about this at the finance committee. And the more I think about the utility program, the more I think that's a good program if it qualifies, as you'd indicated, we gave 100,000 to the business community. Now, this would give us an opportunity to help some of our citizens as well. And, you know, I, I really think it's something that, you know, we should pursue and let you come up with a better idea. I really, really like the idea.
Councilmember Chang?
I would recommend maybe a small portion of, to the, the grants, to the merchants and small businesses, only because I heard from some who felt that they wanted other businesses to benefit. They didn't want to apply themselves. I think that maybe with your distributing some, word may get out that, you know, some people got it. And there may be people who are still interested.
Okay, I can reach back out to Kita. The challenge they have, I'm pretty proud of the fact that county started about three weeks ahead of us. And last week, we got checks on the street. They still don't have checks on the street. And I'm hopeful, next two weeks, we'll get our next wave of checks out there. And maybe we'll beat the county with that one, too. But Bremerton is deploying about a quarter million dollars, and they're also partnering with Kita. There's only two employees over at Kita. We've got everything in place, contract-wise. Maybe we can amend it. I'll, we have a board meeting on Friday. I'll ask the question whether, how effective we could be with, with opening that back up, too. So you, so I'm hearing, I might have seven, less than $10,000 left. And the authority already gave us, we've closed that application period. Are you recommending putting additional dollars to that, 7,000 to 10,000?
Yeah, maybe 25, 25 to 50. It would depend on the, I would recommend just extending the, the application period to see what comes in.
It looks like we lost the mayor. Does he have city?
Be overwhelmed with your suggestion. Should I send him a text and tell him to be logged back in?
I need Mayor Pro Tim Rosa Pepe to take over.
There you go.
Oh, we lost quite a few people. Brandy, you're muted. I wonder if there's a mess. There's power outages all over, I don't know. There's the mayor.
Yeah, I just walked over to Brandy's office because my computer crashed.
Where's your mask?
Right there. Oh, I, Fred, my question to you was, where, are you recommending additional dollars to be put to that small business program?
And yes, I did recommend maybe another 25,000 to 50,000, but not so much the money, but just extending the, the period for people to apply. Because I think, I think word is really getting out, and people are getting excited about it now, especially with checks being delivered.
Okay, I will, we have a Kita board meeting on Friday, and I will ask them that question, whether or not they have the bandwidth. There's only two employees at Kita, so, and they're working on about a quarter million dollars worth of grants for Bremerton. And then, gosh, was a significant amount with the county. I can't recall the total dollars. So, okay, other guidance on this issue? Yeah, my mayor's report is on my computer screen. Let me go check my computer.
I can't get out.
See if I can log back in.
I just let Councilmember Ash be back into the meeting.
Do you want to skip forward to any of our department head reports while we're waiting on the mayor?
Sure, I'm happy to report. Charlotte Archer, City Attorney. The OPMA, PRA proclamations have been extended through October 1st. So this continues to be our reality until at least October 1st. And the other impactful proclamations have likewise been extended related to utility shut-offs and whatnot. So that was all I had to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the proclamations if any council members have a question.
I'm going to finish with my mayor's report here. See, Dutch Brothers Coffee opened last week. We had some traffic complaints about that, and we're working with some signage and striping there to, to help with that issue. And we have a scoping meeting today with Rice, Fergus, Miller for the city hall improvements. Back at the retreat, we were talking about, you know, weatherization of the building roof, siding windows, and possibly an expansion to city hall. Then COVID came. And so we're now just looking at the envelope of the building. And I don't, we're working just fine in the space, space we have, but we need to have, you know, a watertight workspace. Otherwise, we'll have problems in the future with the building. So, so we had a scoping meeting for that. And I think it's the first meeting in October. We're hopeful to bring a contract back for an up to 30% design and scoping of the, of bid-ready documents. Probably preparing for 20, late 2021 or possibly 22. Let's see here, Public Health Board. And the, and last meeting, we talked extensively about the St. Michael's outbreak, and we've seen a lot of that in the newspaper. And the desire for our new health director, Dr. Morrow, really wants to see us put a mobile testing facility back in place here in Kitsap County to turn the testing, COVID testing around faster than it's, it's currently happening, which is taking five to eight days from when you call your doctor to when we know. And that's much too long. You've exposed too many people by that time. So we asked him for some costs and how that could happen. So, John, Mr. Clausen?
Yeah, just what, what's entailed in that, Mayor? Is that a monstrous task to set something like that up?
It, I don't, Dr. Morrow wasn't real succinct in, in his presentation. And those are some of the questions we had. I don't think it's that monumental. We set it up previously, and nobody used it. And it's not inexpensive to do. And we had the help of the National Guard previously, and it would probably be through a community health partner or something of that nature. And so really, what's, what's happening is, you know, this is America, and everybody wants to make money. And, and your medical facility needs to, to pay the doctor, and their overhead needs to pay you, bill your insurance company. And to bill your insurance company, they like to, like to either see, have to see you in this form or in person. And so you call and say you've got some symptoms and you want to get tested, and you need to have a doctor's visit before they'll order that testing. So it adds time to the process. And we're trying, we would provide an opportunity for testing that you don't have to jump through those hoops is really what Dr. Morrow is looking at. So let's see here, the transit, you, Mr. Clausen, you know more about this than I do, but have we accepted the Southworth Ferry yet?
No, actually, we haven't as of yet. We did have, the manufacturer brought it down and brought it into the Southworth Dock to make sure it would fit. And, but we're still a couple of weeks away. They're finishing off some of the punch list items on it.
So it fit in the dock, though?
It did fit in the dock.
That's a good, good milestone.
John, can you let everybody know where that YouTube video was? That was pretty awesome.
Yeah, I'm not sure. You could probably get to it through Kitsap Transit's website. You can access that way. It was a video that our public affairs person put together. And it, it does a pretty good description of the vessel and some of the interior features of it. But go to Kitsap Transit's website, and I'm sure there's a link there for it. Or you could go to Kitsap Transit's Facebook page. It was posted on their Facebook page as well.
Wonderful, that's all I have for my mayor's report. Department heads, Charlie, do you have anything else? Brandy?
Yeah, so I actually have two things for you this evening. One is, I believe some of you guys know that we're required by the state to submit an annual report if we have costs associated, associated with more than $100,000 of public records requests dollars to be sent to the state report or to the state. So I've submitted that report. It was due September 1st. And right now, we have about 45,000 in costs associated with public records requests, but we have about 56,000 in cost to manage the records. So I think we're pretty, we're at that threshold. So moving forward, it sounds like that we're now going to be required instead of asked to be submitted that report. I'll be getting together with the finance department. I know that we had talked about this before we reached the stage to have a more better detailed report capturing those expenses when we got close to that number. So we're there. And so I'll reach back out to them to, to get more, more accurate numbers for you guys. The second one is that I've been working on electronic management. So right now, I have uploaded into our Laserfish records system. Because what it's, it's an all-encompassed system, but part of that houses our records electronically. And so right now, to date, I have the last 20 years of our resolutions, our last 20 years of our ordinance, the last 20 years of our council agendas, last 20 years of our minutes. And I don't know if I said ordinances, but resolutions, ordinance, minutes, council agendas for the last 20 years are all in that portal. This week, I will be re, in my engineering, we'll be meeting with Laserfish to connect the public portal. So here, hopefully, in the next, I'm not sure how long that takes, but I would say probably maybe the next 30, 60 days, we should have that all available to the public for them to search. If you're curious to see what that would look like, you can go to the City of Renton's website. And on there, they have a section on their website that you can click. And of course, I wrote that down. I can send you the link to it, and you can check out their website. I can send you the link to it and you can check out their website and it has all the documents that they have scanned and housed and available for the public to search for. So that is the goal for the City of Port Orchard to look like for searching records that we have. So other than that, that's all I have.
Do you have a question for you? Years ago, we digitized a lot of the historic records for the City of Port Orchard and it was like from this council minutes from day one. Do we still have that digitized? Do we have CD for that?
We have the CD from like the first few years. After that, they have not been found. So what we ended up doing was a few years ago, we had an intern come in and we actually gathered those books from the state activist and had them rescan it and OCR them. And so we've maintained those on our drive now. And then now what we're doing is just dumping them into Laserfish for easy searchability.
So how many years of city history do we not have digitized? Do you know off the top of your head? You say what you've got now is twenty years back. What?
We have all of it. We have all of eighteen ninety to the current, our ordinance minutes, resolutions. It's just not housed in Laserfish at this point.
Okay, thank you.
It's just categorizing it and putting it in the right buckets so that it can be found through the system. So she's got twenty years done in that manner, which is probably the most sought-after documents and will work to get everything in there eventually. So I heard a second question from someone. I just didn't see who it was.
That was me. So Brandy, do you also have staff reports and are, and are those all PDFs or are they on Word as well?
We have three years of the staff reports into the system and we have up to, I think, two thousand and four to the current in our outside of Laserfish. So we're working to get all of those into Laserfish as well, but it's not quite there yet for the staff reports or contracts.
They'll be PDFs or?
PDF.
Yes.
Yeah, we wouldn't want somebody downloading it from the outside and altering those. We wouldn't have a middle word document. Other questions for Brandy? On that matter, okay. Thank you, Brandy. Mr. Bond, what else do you have for us tonight?
Just one announcement. At the council meeting on the twenty-second of this month, if everything goes correctly, our code enforcement officer, Mr. Price, is going to be bringing forward. We have to get city council approval to proceed with abatement of a whole bunch of junk vehicles and nuisance issues on Crawford Road. And so I just, if anyone has any questions about that prior to the meeting, please reach out to us ahead of time. And Doug will be in attendance at that meeting to answer any questions that you have, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. In case you happen to be out there, you may want to drive by, although I don't recommend going down that road as there's no place to turn around and there's a whole lot of vehicles blocking the roadway.
You said Crocker Road, right?
Crawford.
Okay.
Mr. Dorsey, do you have anything to report? Okay, I see Tony Lang, our public works supervisor, sat through this entire meeting. I'm certain he's got something to report from Public Works.
I have nothing.
You have nothing. You were here for two hours and nothing to share. All right. Councilmember Ashley's raising her hand.
Right, are we doing our pickup this fall? That would be a Tony or Mark question.
We are not, Councilmember.
Okay.
We suspended that because of COVID. And Mr. Crocker, you're, you're our last victim.
Well, the finance department is pedaling extra hard now that we are in full swing in the biennial budget process. I did want to thank Brandy for her working, getting documents into Laserfish and getting it to a point where Soonable releases to the public portal. I think that's going to be an amazing change for the public of Port Orchard, the council as well as staff. So I'm looking forward to getting all the other departments involved, getting the planning department, their documents online, Public Works. It's going to be a very powerful tool. Once we get everybody scanned in and available to the public at the type of a search function. So very excited for that. That, that's all for me tonight.
And before I go to citizens' comments, anything from the good of the, for the good of the order from council members? Councilmember Chang?
Just wanted to remind council that there will be a cleanup of the area behind Goodwill. It will be abandoned homeless camps and the group that's sponsoring it is called Northwest Horse Hospitality. They're the ones who did the cleanup on Blackjack Creek off of Kendall and the cleanup by the KFC. This one I heard is flatter than the Blackjack Creek one. However, there are more, there's a lot of more debris to collect, including needles, but it'll be from twelve noon to two thirty and there will be lunch, lunch and refreshments.
Okay, thank you for that. Other good, good of the orders? Okay, Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, would it be inappropriate for me to ask that Fred, Jay and Nick hang out after the meeting just to talk about future meeting dates for land use committee?
Certainly. Mr. Bond probably wants to participate in that conversation too. And Brandy will just need to make him the host maybe and then she can turn the recording off and you guys can work on dates. So with that, other good of the orders? Okay, hearing none. Worth our second citizen comment period. Is there anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Just speak up and I'll identify yourself. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. So I'm going to leave the media during the meeting and we're going to stop the recording.